And call the meeting to order then. Just a reminder to everyone that because meetings being recorded, to keep your microphone muted if you're not speaking and to not forget to unmute yourself when you do. For applicants, to please limit your time to 10 minutes. And when you do speak, to identify yourself, so Teresa can get it for the record. And that if you have somebody other than your main representative to that needs to answer a question or present something, if you would identify them so that staff can control the cameras and microphones accordingly. With that, are we in compliance with Freedom of Information Act, Teresa?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you, and if you would do the roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
Here.
Ms. Foss?
Here.
Mr. Strecker?
Here.
Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Ms. Remke?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Gentman?
Here.
Thank you, and does staff have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Fern AM Restaurant was withdrawn because it hadn't had, didn't have a complete package. So I would, we, staff requested it be withdrawn from the agenda.
Thank you, Chris, and can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll second. You need a motion. Sorry, Dale. I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended. I'm removing the plates.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Whitmer, a second by Mr. Gentman. I will ask Teresa to run through the roll for, for your approval. If anybody has any changes to the agenda yourselves, as Teresa goes past, if you would mention them, otherwise vote yes or no. No changes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
Yes.
Thank you, and Chris, did we have any citizen comments?
No, sir. Public comments concerning the agenda items were, could have been submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal. The public comment period closed at noon yesterday. There were no comments on the public portal. Citizens who wished to sign up for public comment participation by phone during this meeting were to notify or call the board secretary. No one has notified at this, to, no one notified the board secretary prior to that deadline. So there are no public comments and no, we, no one wants to speak on anything.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Moving on then to new business, new development, final for Harris Teeter Fuel Station, if you would, staff, do your presentation.
Yes, sir. DRB 000812-2020 Harris Teeter Fuel Station. We are confirmed with the presenter is on the line. Harris Teeter is requesting final approval for the proposed demolition of the existing car wash in Park Plaza Shopping Center Seapine and development of a fuel center with 10 fueling stations and a 240 square foot kiosk with outdoor sales. The fuel center will be designed with similar materials and finishes to match the Harris Teeter, integrating it well with the surrounding properties and keep as much of the existing vegetation in place through the use of ridge rock to retaining wall system. Brick pavers have been included in the, in the design to avoid increasing the impervious coverage of the site. It's important to note that this was a LMO requirement because they're at their maximum impervious coverage. The project received conceptual approval on February 14th of this year from the Design Review Board. Staff recommends approval provided the applicant addresses the questions regarding the material of the exterior vending covers as listed in staff comments. The site is in red on your screen in front of you. Greenwood Drive is sort of diagonal at the top of the screen coming down from Seapine Circle. Office Park kind of snakes across the right and bottom of the screen. Harris Teeter is in the, is the large square in the bottom left-hand corner of the screen. Let me know if any of the board members don't know where we are or confused. Not hearing or seeing any, we'll move on. This, looking at the surrounding architecture, Harris Teeter Shopping Center, that shopping center is actually two parcels. The Harris Teeter side was recent, not recently, maybe 10 years ago, redeveloped. The theater side was not. Just some views of the architecture, specifically the brick pavers that have been used in the redevelopment on the Harris Teeter side. So this is the proposed site demolition plan for the existing car wash that's there. Sort of a site analysis of how traffic will flow in and around the new fueling station. Again, a site plan illustrating the pavers that will be used and where. This is a fixture plan showing the kiosk here with the canopy in front of it, and you can see the outdoor sales. There are also some outdoor sales here on the sides of the kiosk. It's also important to note the propane sales in the back and the dumpster. A drainage, grading and drainage plan. This is the existing trees that will be removed and those trees that will be preserved. So you can see there were some, some larger trees here that will be taken out. The trees in this area will be preserved. There's a large oak here and I believe a pine here that is being protected by that ridge rock system here and here. The proposed landscape plan, again, a lot of the plants that were used are picked up from the, the Harris Teeter shopping side of it, shopping center landscape. Just some details, the bollard detail and the dumpster enclosure details. Again, those bollards match the bollards at Harris Teeter. This is the light pole footer. I guess one of staff's concern or questions would be the existing light poles at Harris Teeter are just wood light poles with no footer or exposed concrete. So I guess the question of the applicant is, is this still applicable? This is the, the base for the canopy, detail for that. Dumpster enclosure details. Canopy plan. Canopy plan and ceiling plan. Sections through the canopy roof. I'm sorry, here's the, the gutter layout, decorative gutter layout that you'll be looking up at on the canopy. Elevation of the canopy. Note the kiosk right here, and then we're moving into the kiosk drawings, and these are the kiosk elevations. Section through that, through the, through the kiosk. Outdoor vending enclosures. This is the ice chest enclosure. Again, more outdoor vending enclosures. See the roof on these vending enclosures? These are adjacent to the, or up against the kiosk. This is a lighting plan proposed, so you can see the light, the light fixtures around. It meets LMO requirements. This is the wooden post fixture that they're proposing, which matches the existing light fixtures. And this is the light fixture that they are proposing. I think it's important to note, this is not one of the ones that the DRB had pre-approved, but it looks very similar and staff, staff has no issues with it. It's also important to note that they will be updating the rest of the lighting at, on the Harris Teeter side of the shopping center to match this. So, so that all the lights on Harris Teeter side will be the same. Sorry, yeah. So we're going to look at some illustrations. So here you can, it's a bird's eye view, looking down, you can see the outdoor vending, that sort of free standing here. There's that screened outdoor vending adjacent to the kiosk and the ice shelter here, along with the dumpster enclosure back here. Again, another view of that. You can see that the, how the, the plane is being broken up up here, which was a request. Looking into the fueling center from the main approach to Harris Teeter. This is sort of that, the backside looking towards Office Park, Harris Teeter would be behind you. Again, sort of the backside of the kiosk with that vending enclosure here and the outdoor, another outdoor freestanding vending enclosure here. This is the color board. Again, staff recommends approval provided the applicant can address staff questions regarding the material of the exterior vending covers. And to be clear, staff just wants to make sure that that material is not faux or a foam meant to match. That concludes the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Again, normally I go through board members for staff questions now, though I'll ask that you just, when we come up to overturn a comments that if you have any for staff, ask them then. I will ask though now that you, you mentioned the lighting, Chris, on the poles. What about the lighting at the, at the canopy itself? Is staff reviewed that too? Is it this different lighting, I presume, that lets on this full light?
The canopy lighting and the site lighting meet LMO requirements for brightness and color.
Okay, and then the other question was I, I, on the last time we saw this, staff had concern about the U-shaped bollard and being a stainless steel finish. And if I recall, I think that was still proposed. Is that correct? Has it changed, so, changed position, I guess, on the U-shaped bollard or being a stainless steel finish or not?
No, staff, no, staff has not changed their position on the U-shaped bollard. And, but the, in discussion with the applicant, the applicant has elected to move forward and have that discussion at this time with the board.
Okay. With that then, I'll ask if the applicant's present, and just a reminder again to limit your presentation to 10 minutes if you could, and to identify yourself for the record. If you have anything to add to Chris's narrative.
Yeah, um, this is, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, this is Maggie Jones at Kenley Horn, representing the Harris Teeter Fuel Center. And on the line is also Garrett Marvett with Harris Teeter, who can, if there are any questions specifically for the end user, he's available. To add to Chris, we tried to take into consideration everything that the board and staff had at the preliminary approval. We have changed the roof to a true gable roof, added some decorative gutter layout on the bottom to break up that ceiling. And we do, to clarify some of Chris's questions, the outward vending enclosures will not be any kind of faux or foam. It'll be the exact same material that's being used on the kiosk. So it'll have a brick base, the water table, and then the ephist finish and the standing theme Hartford Green roof. So it'll be comprised of all the same material that the kiosk is. Um, the lighting, I think there was, Chris, they, yeah, the concrete pole foundation is just no longer applicable since we did revise to be the wooden poles to match, those are direct buried into the ground. So those will match the rest of the shopping center, and we're just trying to update the shopping center as well as the fuel center to be LED efficient lighting that will match all the LMO and DRB standards. Um, we do ask for the board to take into consideration the stainless steel U-bollards. We have updated all the rest of the site bollards, as you can see around the kiosk, to match the shopping center. And we just, the client has a strong footprint for U-shaped bollards. We feel that it gives it a nice clean finish and with the Salt Airhead had a lot less maintenance problems. And we do feel that it will still give a very clean look while accomplishing everything else on site that the board and staff has requested. Um, I think other than that, I think we've addressed all of the staff and board comments. The U-shaped bollard is probably the only item for discussion and hopefully everyone is pleased with the product we've come up with.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else, then I'll move on to board comments and discussion, starting with Mr. Gentman.
So Chris, the vending unit that the staff was concerned about is the, the freestanding one. Can you point to it on there? It's, it's the one by the blue car in that picture?
Oh.
That one?
Yes, yes, sir. And, and staff is, staff is concerned, I don't know, it's just not clear to staff what the material on the vending enclosures is going to be. I don't know if it's a thin, if it's a thin brick or, I just want to confirm that it's not a foam like we see on some of these signs.
That the, so it looks like it's EIFS above the brick water table, and it looks like it's on steel studs. Is that correct to the applicant question? Uh, I'm sorry, that was, okay, thank you. All right.
Yeah, it will, it will not have any of the foam material that Chris is worried about.
Yeah, I, you know, this has been before us two or three times, and I think it's progressed well. I don't really have any comments outside of the things staff have brought up, the U-shaped bollards. They've addressed that the poles will be direct buried and there will be a housing over that third vending unit. So if all that is taken care of, I'm, I'm fine. I don't have any real other comments.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Mr. Whitmer.
I agree. I think you've addressed comments, it's progressed nicely. I'm fine with the bollard as submitted. That's my opinion on it, so I'm good for this project.
Thank you. Ms. Foss?
I agree. I think the project's been cleaned up and streamlined and the bollards don't bother me as well. Thank you.
You, Mr. McAllister?
I also agree. I think you've done a great job addressing comments, and it looks like you've been working with staff to get this thing tightened up. One really minor detail question I had, on the dumpster enclosure, it looks like there's like a metal flashing on top of the cap. Is that going to be painted or treated, or is it just a raw metal finish? It just looked like it was probably going to be exposed, so I just wanted to get clarification on what throws a color to it or something.
Yeah, um, it is not, it, those linemen, it's actually the Hartford Green saying that all the rest of the roofing material just to prevent water from getting into the brick. And we revised the dumpster door to be the wood finish that staff had requested.
Okay. All right. That's good with me. I don't have anything else. I think it looks good.
Thank you. Ms. Remke?
I don't have any further comments.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Molesky?
Yeah, it looks great. Very thorough presentation. I like it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just had a couple of questions on retaining walls that will be at the end. Do we have any details on those, on how those will be constructed?
They're relatively short, so we don't have the exact plan. We usually have the contractor kind of, that does out, but there'll be a, just a small ridge rock, which will be kind of more of the natural finish that's used in the area. And it's just a few feet high behind the curve to protect those trees, so. But there, there, it'll just, it's not like a cast in place concrete wall or anything. It's just some block wall to hold up near the trees.
Okay. And other question is the details on the kiosk show the HVAC equipment on the roof of the kiosk, but it's been modified to have a full hip roof. So my question is, where is the HVAC equipment for that?
It is still on the roof. And the, it is screened. You will not be able to see the HVAC system. We had long discussions on that with them, and I know they, it's been modified and will not be seen is the extent of that.
I guess I'm a little confused because this elevation, you know, it shows it being fully hip, so I don't see how it, unless it can be in an attic space, if it needs to be open to air, I don't see how it can go on the roof. I mean, because it's a fully hip roof, it comes to a peak, so how could it sit on top of it?
Um, one second, and I can provide some clarification on that.
That's okay. And possibly, I was going to suggest that you, Chris, I was just going to suggest, you know, it's a minor detail. I wouldn't see it as anything to, I can tie it over. You know, it's possibly, it's just something that may be a final motion, you could just note, you know, this to be, you know, coordinated or worked out with staff would be my suggestion.
Yeah, we can definitely do that, and we have no intention of it not being screened. I'll have to get the correct details. I know there was a long thought out discussion on how it was being handled, so we'll be happy to give that detail to staff and make sure that Chris is comfortable moving forward with that.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the bollard, yes, I, you know, it's, it's the U-shaped bollard, it's limited application. It's not like you're, I mean, I don't have an issue with it. I believe that's all for me, so I'll do a second round of comments, just to make sure we got everything covered, starting with Mr. Gentman again.
You faded off on me at the end, Dale. What was your comment on the bollard? You fine with it?
Yes, I was fine with that.
Okay, I'm taking notes. Yeah, that's an interesting catch on that HVAC unit. Totally missed that. I, I agree with the chairman, I don't see how that works. So, because it does show a full hip roof, yet this section shows a hole in the top. So I think we'll, I would be willing to look at that if, if, if staff wants to, when they review that, to send it to me also. But it's, I, okay. So other than that, I have no additional comments, but that was a good catch there for the chairman, so. Done. Thank you.
Mr. Whitmer?
No additional comments.
And Ms. Foss?
I agree. Good catch on the air conditioner. I also heard in there some discussion about the retaining wall, that we don't really have the specs on the block and how high it is. So I'd like to see that made as part of the motion to have that approved by staff. Thank you.
You, Mr. McAllister?
No additional comments.
Remke?
No additional comments.
Mr. Molesky?
No comments, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So yes, seems to me the key things are, when a motion is made, just looks like the review of this rooftop HVAC unit, coordinating how that's screened and where, and probably some information on the retaining walls. So I believe that covers it, so would somebody like to make a motion?
Is there a sheet I can refer to on the retaining wall? In the motion, a detail? I'm trying to find it. I can't find it quickly.
I never saw a detail, I just saw noted on a plan.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think there is, I don't think there is a detail for the retaining wall.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll defer to Maggie to correct me, but I don't, I haven't seen one.
That's fine.
No, we just, yeah, we just noted that it would be the ridge rock retaining system, so we will provide a detail for that for staff.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion regarding DRB 000812-2020 Harris Teeter Fuel Station. Motion for approval with the following conditions. Confirm and supply a detail of the third vending enclosure, that it be detailed with the brick water table and the EIFS and the metal roof to match the other two. Submit that for staff review plus one DRB member. The applicant confirmed that the light poles will match the rest of the The applicant confirmed that the light poles will match the rest of the center and be direct buried. The U-shaped bollards are approved as submitted. The note that the flashing on top of the dumpster is to match the green color of the roof material. Applicant to provide a, to confirm and provide a detail of the HVAC unit and the hip roof above the kiosk. There seems to be a conflict in the information. Has to be submitted for staff plus one DRB member review. And applicant to provide a detail of the retaining wall for review by staff and one DRB member. That's it.
And I'll second. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Gentman and seconded by Mr. McAllister to approve with the following conditions. To confirm and supply detail of the third vending machine enclosure to match the other two with the brick and EFIS roof finishes. For review by staff and one DRB member. Confirmation that the light poles will match the, those at the center and be direct buried. The U-shaped, U-shaped bollard is approved as submitted. The flashing on the dumpster enclosure to match the green on the roof at the canopy. A detail be provided of the HVAC unit at the top of the kiosk for review and approval by staff and one DRB member. The detail of the retention wall be provided for review by staff and one DRB member. Did I catch it? Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. And if we would, Teresa, if you would do the role of, for approval and everybody, if you have any comments or additions or changes to make, if it comes up your turn to state them, otherwise both yes or no.
Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Motion passes unanimously. All in favor, none opposed. Would now move on to our next project, North Ridge Plaza site improvements. You do your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself on this agenda item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitmer. Make note that Mr. Whitmer is recused.
DRB 000903-2020 North Ridge Renovations. The applicant is requesting final approval for the proposed site improvements and building facade upgrades to North Ridge Plaza Shopping Center. This project received conceptual approval on February 25th of this year. Site improvements will consist of demolition of a portion of the shopping center, milling and resurfacing the existing asphalt, replacing timber curbs with concrete curbs, upgrading existing site parking lot lighting to LED lighting by Palmetto Electric, landscaping, new landscaping, tree pruning and removal of trees identified as hazards in the tree inventory report prepared by Bartlett Tree Experts. Building facade upgrades will include removal of the existing wood, wooden canopy and replacement with a standing seam metal roof canopy. Existing exterior wall surfaces will be resurfaced with an EFIS system. The overall existing footprint of the shopping center again will be reduced by approximately 14,000 square foot. The demo plan and an image of the color board was provided by the applicant to supplement their original application and those were emailed to the board last Thursday. The physical color board did not arrive in time to be displayed for review by the design review board. Based on those submissions, staff would like to change their recommendation to approval with the following conditions. Provide a lighting plan or manufacturer's cut sheet that illustrates the canopy light levels will not exceed LMO limits. Provide a conduit routing plan for the canopy to, for review and approval by staff. Three, revise the planting plan for staff review and approval to add to A, add canopy trees along the western property line and B, change Magnolia Little Gem to the straight species Magnolia at the theater. Four, provide a trenching plan for staff review and approval. The trenching, just to be clarify, the trenching plan, it would be for the new parking lot lighting. There's a lot of trees in the parking lot and staff is concerned about that, about disturbing those roots. And five, provide a hardscape plan for staff review and approval illustrating where A, new walks will replace existing walks and B, existing walks will be removed. The site is outlined in red on your screen. 278 is running along the bottom of the screen. You see Matthews Drive coming up the, the, pretty much the middle of the, of the slide. I think it's important to note that Sea Turtle Marketplace is directly across 278. And yesterday we had, I would remind you, not yesterday, I'm sorry, Wednesday. We looked at the site there, that out parcel at the corner of Matthews and 278 for Parkers. And again, I would remind you that the gas station opposite that site and opposite this, opposite Matthews, there are plans to renovate that gas station. You can see the airport coming in on the right hand, the runway coming in on the right hand side of the screen. Do all the board members know where we are? Well, if none of the board members, if you're confused or don't know where we are, please let me know right now. Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to move forward. There was an extensive tree survey provided by the applicant, which I've kind of condensed. They looked at several things. And of particular interest is the condition class that you can see here. So there's, well, you can just see that they under good, they, most of the canopy is good. There are some poor though, poor conditions. And those are identified in the field here, those trees. Again, the age class. So it's an, it's an older maturing stand of trees and there aren't a lot of young trees to replace the ones coming up. Looking at diameter and where the trees are in, where the, most of the trees are in relation to diameter. Specimen trees. They've identified three specimen trees on site. And you can see where those are here. This identifies the curbs that will be replaced with concrete and the new crosswalks added. I'm sorry. Forgive me. This is the demolition plan. So you can see what's to be removed out here. And that canopy along with the curbs here that will be removed. And then here is the new concrete curves that will go in. A detail of the sidewalk. Again, this is an elevation of the shopping center that will remain as well as a layout of that. So you can see this is the area that's going to be eliminated. So really from here on to Home Goods is the only will be remaining. Theater is outside of this, this parcel. Elevation of Home Goods. Elevation of the Dollar Tree. Can see below the condition of the existing wooden canopy. Elevation of the balance of the shopping center, the proposed elevation. Of fast, fast concern is the color that's going on the, this system, this storefront under the canopy. A section through the new proposed canopy. It has widened a little bit from previous submittals. And a picture of the color board. It's the Sherwin-Williams Coral Bean that is of concern for staff. I'm sorry, Caribbean coral. Thank you. A cut sheet, cut sheet of the Nietzsche Alphal panels and the metal roof. The proposed lighting plan from Palmetto Electric using their pre-approved DRB, pre-approved fixtures. The proposed landscape plan. This is that western property line. There are several trees coming, that's concern to staff. There are several trees that are being removed here and staff is concerned that this is going to be fairly wide open. And it is a fairly wide landscape area that could accommodate more trees. Again, the backside of the project. Here are the, this is the theater. This is the building that's removed. So the addition of changing those Magnolias to the straight species so that they're a little bit taller in this area. Elevations with the proposed trees of the shopping center. It's important to note these are the proposed trees. So these palms, proposed and existing. So these palms are proposed. Landscape schedule. Proposed furniture and light fixture. So again, staff is recommending approval with five conditions. I'm happy to run through those conditions again, Mr. Chairman, if you would like me to, or otherwise staff's presentation is complete.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I believe Mr. Gentman and I received staff's revised conditions previously, but I don't know if other board members did.
They did not.
So maybe just run through them again real quickly, just so everybody gets a general sense of what your thoughts are.
Sure, not a problem. Number one, provide a lighting plan or manufacturer's cut sheet that illustrates that the canopy light levels will meet LMO requirements. To clarify, there is a I, I don't know how, how, a long light fixture that is up, in, up under the canopy and it's not clear what light, to staff, it's not clear to staff what light levels will be provided by that fixture. So we just want to make sure it doesn't exceed LMO requirements. Two, provide a conduit routing plan for the canopy for review and approval by staff. Again, this is to make sure that we don't end up with a lot of congestion under that canopy with all those conduits like we've experienced in the past. Three, revise the planting plan for staff review and approval. And this is a two-part one, A, to add canopy trees to the western property line and B, change the Magnolia Little Gem to straight species Magnolia at the theater. The straight species Magnolia will get larger, the Little Gem is a, is a dwarf variety. And four, provide a trenching plan for staff review and approval. This is for the, the lighting plan. With all the existing trees, staff is concerned that in adding, in putting in new lights, that roots will be disturbed and we want to minimize that as much as possible to protect the existing trees. And five, provide a hardscape plan for staff review and approval illustrating where A, new walks will replace existing walks. This was a concern at the conceptual review and in discussions with the applicant. It's staff's understanding that all the walks under the, the covered path will be replaced with new concrete walks. But staff wants to make sure that it's clear on a plan that that's going to happen and where. And B, if there are any existing walks that will be removed, we, that, that, that plan, that hardscape plan needs to identify those areas. And that concludes staff's recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And yeah, just to follow up on the sidewalks, I do recall the last time we reviewed this, staff had stated that the, the intent would be, I believe, to replace all the locks at the canopy, just because as we reviewed them, the extent of work demolition that would be required to put in the new. And I believe the existing walkway is exposed aggregate, which would be extremely difficult to try to match anyway. And on the lighting plant, my suggestion, I think staff's suggestion was providing lighting plan or manufacturer's cut sheet. My suggestion would be both, just because we don't know exactly where these lights go. I don't know that, you know, I wouldn't see a reason to hold that up, but I think part of the condition would be to require the lighting plan showing where they are as well as the nation of, you know, how much light it will be putting out. So with that, I will move to the applicant. And again, just a reminder to identify yourself when you speak so Teresa gets it for the record and so that sees it so recording, we know who, who suit. And then also to limit your presentation to 10 minutes.
Yeah, the applicant is present. It's William Goldsmith from Gator North Ridge Partners LLP. And I'm also accompanied with one of our in-house architects, Todd Osborne of Gator Development Corporation. We are located at 7850 Northwest 146th Street, Miami Lakes, Hama, Florida. 33162. I'm sorry, 331 80.
Welcome. And did you have anything further to add to staff's presentation or not?
The only thing I would add to this, my understanding of what staff had just said is that they approve with conditions as opposed to the May 19th comment sheet that had said they recommend denial. We understand that they have an issue potentially with the Caribbean coral color on the color chart, that all the other colors are okay. And we can come up with an alternative color right now, if it would please the staff. And in particular, what I would say is if we turn our attention to the proposed elevations. And in particular, what I would say is if we turn our attention to the proposed elevations. There's sheet MA 101, which shows the entire shopping center. And then after that, there's sheet M 103, which is really for the purposes of showing Dollar Tree, but it does show one of the local tenants. And then after that, there's sheet MA 104, which is where the bulk of the Caribbean coral color seems to be coming up. And that's along the storefront system. It's at the base below the glass, is my understanding of where that, where that offensive color is. We would propose to staff, if they would be amenable to changing that color to either the tan. It's not a tan. It's actually, we call it beach. Beach house or sand beach. Todd, which is the one that is the darker of the two? Is it beach house or?
Beach house is the darker of those two.
So I would say if we could change that color to beach house, would staff be okay with that? So that would be one recommendation to address that concern. And that's the beach house, the darker one. This way it'll match the crown molding that you'll see above the local tenant spaces. And we'll also tie into the color at the Home Goods, so that there'll be some sort of symmetry continuity at the shopping center. That would please staff. We would be happy to do that. As far as the other comments that we understood, there is no issue with the canopy light. It's just a, something I think maybe I might have made a mistake. We agree not to exceed the LMO allowed light levels. We were never intending to do otherwise. I think we just forgot on the photometric detail to put down what that 36 lumens of canopy light is in relationship to the LMO. But obviously, whichever is less is acceptable. So I'll just put down, it's either the 36 lumens or the LMO, the lesser of. And hopefully that will resolve that comment. The multiple, the next comment that they had, which is the multiple trees removed, we understand from meeting with the city landscape department on site, that we have an agreement that we can remove the poor-conditioned trees. In the staff report, it says that they'd like additional trees planted along the main drive. We cannot agree to that. What we can agree to is what I discussed when I was before the board, pre-COVID, and I think late February, that we would plant in the back along Matthews Drive, that whatever mitigation has to occur, that we can do that. Although I don't think that there's any mitigation required. But we could come up with a number that we could agree, because we are okay with filling in. We just need to know what that number would be. As far as the next comment about the straight species magnolia versus the dwarf species gem magnolia that we put in, quite honestly, I never even knew there was a difference. So dwarf or regular size, we'll put in whatever staff wants. So we agree on that. As far as the conflicts with the parking lot and the trenching plan, there will be no conflicts. There is just a note missing, and we're happy to add it. We'll, you know, run the electrical in such a way during the mill pave phase of the project to ensure that we don't have to kill any trees, or adversely impact the health of any trees. So that's a non-issue. And we can provide a trenching plan. We just don't know what that trenching plan will be right now, till I get an electrical set of plans done. So the trenching plan and the electric plans will come hand in hand. As far as the comment about relocation should be added to the lighting plan, actually, we have the lighting on the landscape plans, because the, the tree plan, if you tried to put, I mean, if you tried to put trees on the lighting plan, you wouldn't be able to see it. It would be so microscopically small. So we, we, you can, and it's really hard to see the actual lights on the landscape plan, even when we have detailed cut sheets. But if that would be okay, I think it would accomplish the same purpose. As far as a hardscape plan, we're good with that. And we understand from many, many meetings with the city, that we want to see new sidewalks, because with the introduction of all the columns, and with the existing condition, you don't want to see a, you know, patchy job. I think that that pretty much covers the things that staff was commenting about. And would like to take this time to thank staff. They did a lot of work and did a very good job reviewing everything timely in these difficult times to get us before the board. We're appreciative.
Okay. Thank you very much. And as far as the, with this comment, as far as like the, the tree mitigation, what's, the LMO requires mitigation, possibly, possibly not. But the review board reviews it for aesthetics. So when, you know, staff's recommending trees along the Western property line, it may not be, it's not at all because it's being required to meet minimum requirements as far as quantity or size, but more aesthetics. And that's just a recommendation. So the board will actually here today discuss that and decide if that's needed or not. So I will start with comments with Ms. Foss.
Well, if I could just make one comment about that, because this has been a, we spend an inordinate amount of money on tree studies, porticulturists, arborists reports. We can't, we, we, we spend a lot of time trying to lease space and fill in the Dollar General with the Dollar Tree. And try and extend the Home Goods lease. As I pointed out to the board when I was there, you know, we're in a time when big box space, junior box space is very hard to lease. There's a lot of, of box space. We're in a retail apocalypse. You don't need to look further away from Amazon to realize that retail is not really, the, the old traditional retail doesn't work. You can, my gosh, you can just look at the, the stock for Wayfair or Overstocks. And, you know, I look at that pretty much on a daily basis. Overstocks, since the pandemic, has gone from 16 during the pandemic to currently up to, I mean, during the pandemic, they've gone from pre-pandemic, when they were running around $8, to around 18. It's up 6% today, when I last looked. Wayfair, when I last looked, had gone pre-pandemic. They were somewhere around 106. And post-pandemic, they're around 175.
We're here to review aesthetics, not to review business plans. So I appreciate that.
The problem that we're having is we can't, we can't rent space, big box space, when the tenants tell us they don't want to be blocked by trees. And we have so many trees already. And then this one area is, we have to have at least one or two line sight views to the shopping center. And, and, and the devastation that's occurred in the retail business, if it, it's not that I want to, I've been trying to put, extend this point. I can't rent the shopping center when it's all blocked by trees. I cannot.
Okay.
So that, that one area that we have is a killer. It's the one, it's the one line sight that we have. Everything else, because of the staggered nature of trees, almost completely blocks the center. We don't have the luxury of putting in parking lot lights type stuff, where we create lines. And, and all the parking lot lights are in a certain row, so that you don't completely block something. Here, we have effectively line sight problems. And visibility goes right to the board presidents of all these companies. And that's the problem we're having.
That's the 10-minute timer, so we must move on. Ms. Foss, we will start with comments and discussion from you.
Okay. Um, the Caribbean coral being replaced with your beach house tan color is a, I can accept that. I'm worried about the color band of the, the sign bands above there. I can't tell. I've tried to put my reading glasses on and everything's so small. What color are those?
That color. The Sign Ban fascia is a Nietzsche panel. And the Nietzsche panel we gave. It's a redwood cement paneling.
All right.
That's going above the awning.
So I was just wanting to make sure I understood what that was going to be.
That's a natural color.
I think the contrast for that with the rest of the building is a little bit heavy, especially when the bottom part changes to your beach house tan. We discussed in February, the fixing of the theater wall after you removed the building over there. And I haven't seen that addressed as far as I can see yet. So I want to make sure that gets addressed. The, I agree with staff's comments on everything, including some canopy trees along the west side of the property. It's Hilton Head Island. We require trees. We need trees. We don't want our trees removed. And that's the look that Hilton Head has. Many of the other marketing sites don't have a view from the street as well. I think that's it. I've got the color concerns, the sign band contrast with the rest of the buildings, and the theater wall, and trees on the western part of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foss. Moving on to Mr. McAllister.
I agree with Ms. Foss in what she just said regarding the colors on the building. I think, I think the beach house color is approvable in my mind. A little concerned about the contrast with the, with the redwood cement paneling. But be interested to hear other people's thoughts on that. As far as the landscaping stuff, I agree with the staff comments on the two landscaping items. I'm sympathetic to what you, you've said. But as Ms. Foster said, this is Hilton Head, and we have a certain aesthetic. In my mind, as a, at a minimum, you know, if you could put one tree in between the two clusters of trees you have in that plant bed, that would, to me, that would satisfy that. I understand you do still have a lot of trees there, but there is a big void there. And I think it wants at least one canopy tree right there in the middle, in that void. And that, and again, I agree with the staff comment about changing the magnolia species. I think that's an easy fix. I think the Home Goods roof color is approvable. It's a lot darker than I, I was able to go see the physical sample yesterday, and it was a lot darker than I anticipated. So I think it's good. And that's all I've got for my first round.
Thank you. Moving on to Ms. Remke.
I also agree with the beach house color. I think that's a good change. And I also agree with Ms. Foss about the upper facade, about what the color is. Just need to confirm that. I'm glad to see that we are reporing all the sidewalks. I think that makes it all look nice and new, and the canopies look good. Have to agree on the tree issue, like the, the secondary choice for the magnolias. And maybe as was just stated, maybe plant at least one tree in that space. And otherwise, I'm good. Whatever staff wants, whatever comments staff has beyond those, I agree with those.
Thank you, Ms. Remke. Moving on to Mr. Maluski.
Down below, I agree with everyone saying to match what you have going on there at Home Goods, I think would look great. I like the idea behind those signs there of having that textured Nietzsche material there. I did not get to see what the actual redwood looks like, but I'm sure that perhaps between the applicant and staff, they could agree on whether it's redwood, or I'm sure Nietzsche has a, another, other color options perhaps that, that maybe complement what's going on there a little better. But the texture creates a lot of interest. And I think that, that makes sense. As a suggestion, I understand, you know, that the applicant wants to be able to, to the very least, clear some trees to provide a little more visibility of the tenant signage. Is there any type of happy medium or give and take where if, if some of those trees perhaps that may be blocking the tenant signage could be relocated on other parts of the, the property or the site, either where the building is being removed, or throughout the parking lot area, just so as people are driving down, you know, 278 or whatnot, it doesn't look like a clear cut strip center. And so that was one comment there. And then another comment, do we have any elevations to show how this development looks from along Matthews Drive? Is it just going to be the back of the building with employees parked there and not really much attention given to that? I didn't necessarily see any elevations of the rear of the building.
Mr. Maluski.
We don't have elevations on the back of the building. And I would remind you that there's a privacy wall running right along Matthews Drive in the back up here. But there are no, the, it's the back of a, of a shopping center. There are no windows or openings on that, to speak of on that backside. But there is.
Are there any improvements? Okay, I'm sorry. Any improvements to the privacy wall? I, I don't recall what it looks like. I don't know if it's antiquated.
I don't, I don't have any, I don't, staff does not see any improvements proposed to the privacy wall in the application. I don't, I don't have any, I don't, staff does not see any improvements proposed to the privacy wall in the application.
Is it a fair assumption, does the existing privacy wall kind of match the existing building in color and materials? And if that's the case, would there be any need to update the privacy wall so it remains consistent with the new colors and materials on the improvements that are being made to the building?
Mr. Malewski, the privacy wall is a stucco wall, if I recall, and then it has like a lubed, a lubed, wood lubers at the top of it. And yes, and some of those are like falling apart and in need of repair.
That's all tenant's responsibility? That's not town property or?
That's correct. It's not town property.
Okay, I mean, those were my only comments there, I guess. Then the privacy wall, since that's what would be viewed. And again, maybe some give and take with, with the trees to allow a little bit of better visibility of the tenant's space, but, you know, mitigate those trees elsewhere.
Thank you. And Chris, just to clarify, I think when staff was recommending the additional trees at the western property line, it's really in that one gap that Mr. McAllister was pointing out where a number of trees are being removed because they're in poor condition. It's not like staff is not recommending like a massive amount of trees. Am I correct?
That, that is correct. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You'll notice the X is indicate trees that are being removed down in this area. So yes, it's, it's the concern in this gap.
Okay, so there's no suggestion of trees along 278 or Matthew, or William Hilton Parkway? It's really just that one area from where you first turn off the 278 before you get to the, where you turn right to the shopping center?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll move on to Mr. Gentman.
Okay, yeah, I, Mr. Malewski hit on several good points that were discussed in the last meeting and haven't been addressed as best I can tell. One, and Ms. Foss brought up the cinema first, I'll give her credit for that one. One, what's happening to the side of the cinema and we can't tell what's going on in the back of the project or anything along Matthews Drive. So the condition's going to be that if you're stuckling the front of the center, the back's got to be done too. It all has to match. We can't turn the corner and stop. So if I'm doing the conditions, that's going to definitely be one of the conditions that we, you know, and that's going to go with the privacy fence, the cinema, and the entire Matthews Drive elevation. And even when we turn the corners on that new little park, you know, just to make sure that the materials are consistent as they wrap the corner. Getting rid of the Caribbean coral, I think that's a no-brainer. The beach house is fine with me. We still lack details of this canopy. And that was a point of discussion last time. That was sheet one, MA 105. Still very generic on what, you know, what you're wrapping that beam in, what the material is. How's the, there's a little, where that, you can't see my cursor. On the Home Goods section, at the top of that beam where it meets the ceiling, you know, what, what happens in that little crevice? How often do those cross beams happen, you know, that are going back to the wall? Best I can tell, I can't tell any of that. And, and we discussed this in detail and we got the same drawing back. So I'm not all that pleased about that. Another thing we talked about in depth last time was, and it was in staff's original comments, but did not come up in the return comments, so I want Chris to respond to this, is the amount of sign band that is above the new canopy, which makes it even more evident that this is a flat roof structure. The existing center, as we all know, the, the, the slope roof goes practically all the way to the top of the canopy and there's just a little tiny bit of parapet that sticks up, if any. So it's really going to change the look of this shopping center. And, and I remember specifically myself and Ms. Foss talking about that last time. And that does not appear to have changed at all. So it went from six feet to eight feet, which I assume eats up a little bit more of that. But still, we got this big, long, continuous sign band that's going to make this look like, you know, a strip center on Boston Parkway. So I would like everyone in the second round to address that, including Chris, because that was in staff's original comments. And I think that was it. Oh, and other good point that Mr. Malewski brought up was the redwood sign band. I think the texture change would be nice up there. I think it just needs to be a more homogeneous color with the stucco. So go from being, trying to be a redwood to being something in that, that Sierra tan beach house color. And if you have to paint it, paint it. But I think that that's going to stick out a lot. So I thought that was a good comment. So I'll sit back and enjoy round two here, or actually Dale's next, but I'll silence.
Thank you, Mr. Gentman. Chris, would you like to just go ahead and comment on the parapet height that Mr. Gentman was asking about?
Staff was focused on getting the width of the covered pedestrian area to a width that would be appropriate or you could actually use. And they did increase the width of the covered area. Yes, that was, that was why that comment was dropped. But it's a, it's a very good comment and staff, I mean, it was just missed.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And I'll just, for me, I'll just start with that. So looking at the, the details of those wall sections that are cut through there, I noticed like at the village shops, it's eight feet to the, from sidewalk to bottom of fascia and Home Goods is, I believe, 10. You know, one suggestion would be to bump that up. You know, a lot of more shopping centers, I think, have a little bit greater distance from, you know, sidewalk to to the bottom of the structure. That, that would be one way to achieve shortening the, the parapet height would be to raise this entire slope roof structure, not tremendously, but a foot or two would probably help with that. And I think I agree with, some very good comments that have been made so far. Sorry, I agree with Ms. Foss on the theater end wall. I think I had mentioned that initially the last time around and forgot that on my comments. But yes, we definitely would want to see, we don't want to see just the, what's, will be an interior, an interior wall. It needs to be finished off when this existing building is removed from the side of it. The backside of the building, I agree, it needs to be finished on all sides or redone on all sides. Privacy wall along Matthews Drive, I'm concerned that, there are a number of areas where like branches have fallen on that wood lubered screen and, or whatever, and it's falling apart in a number of areas. So to fix up the center, make it look really nice from the, from the tenant entry side. But on the backside, this privacy wall really doesn't look good. And, you know, it just needs some repair, in my opinion. The, at the Dollar Tree, can we get to the elevations, Chris? The Dollar Tree? Yeah, that's good. I guess what bothers me there is that, you know, the roof, the canopy in front of Dollar Tree stops shy of both left and right ends. But like the left side, we, you know, the window on the wall behind extends to the left of the covering and architecturally, it just looks odd. Right, right. And then at the right side, I think the, it looks like the canopy stops about a foot shy of the Home Goods wall. And I think as Mr. Gentman had pointed out at the last meeting when we, about some of the other canopies about that probably were stopping shy. That'll be impossible to actually finish and it'll just catch debris. And my suggestion would just be to extend that roof from side to side. As far as the Machiha panel, I didn't have a problem with the contrast of the, of what's proposed with these EPIS, I guess. Though I, if it was to be something closer in tone to the EPIS, as has been suggested, I wouldn't have an issue with that either. Though I guess, you know, what's proposed reminds me somewhat, I guess, of like where Whole Foods is. If I recall, you know, that's, that's a lighter stucco. It has a darker panel, you know, the wood look panel. So I don't, I don't have an issue with that, but if others do, I will go along with changing it. I believe that covers it for me for this round. So did I start with Ms. Foss? If I do, we go, start back around with you for another round?
Okay, I guess when we go look at that redwood panel for the sign bands, it, it's a stuck-on instead of part of the architecture up there. And that's, when you compare it to Whole Foods, that's part of the architecture is the wood that they've got there. And this looks like a stuck-on and it, it sort of bothers me. If it was part of the building and built in there, I think that would look better. It would also help that parapet wall that we've got that makes us look like we are just dealing with a flat roof in that large area up there. I know when the time comes, staff will handle the signage approvals and they won't, the signage part won't be so big. But it, Michael was right, we still don't have the right appropriateness of the slope canopy versus that large area up there. And you may be right, Dale, about extending the canopy. That might help. I'm not well-versed enough to know how that, how much it would help. I agree with your comment on that canopy over the Dollar Tree needing to just go to the ends. Michael was right and we don't have enough detail on the canopy construction. And John, thanks for bringing up the rear privacy wall in the back of the building because as Dale said, it is in bad shape and that needs to be repaired along with everything else. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAllister.
All right. As far as the canopy, I mean, I, I don't have a particularly strong feeling about it. I do think it would be great if the parapet wall height was visually at least reduced. So I think Mr. Schrecker made a suggestion of potentially extending the canopy a little bit and maybe that would reduce it. Same deal with what Ms. Foss said. I'm not very well-versed in that architectural detailing. But I think it would be great if it could be reduced a little bit. And going back to Mr. Malewski's point, I think dressing up the back a little bit would be nice. If the wall is in disrepair, I think it should be addressed. And we would certainly want to see how the cinema facade gets addressed as well. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, my comment about the canopy, I'm not suggesting that, that the walkway be made any wider than eight feet. I'm just suggesting that from sidewalk to bottom of fascia at the, the increase from, I think it's shown as eight feet there, to it could either be nine or 10 feet. The pedestrian doesn't feel as compressed and that would help reduce the canopy or the parapet height. So you wouldn't be adding anything other than column height. Moving on to Ms. Remke.
I like that idea of moving the canopy up a foot. I think that, that would visually and give a better feel. So I'm on top of that. I also like the comment about the back of the building on, on the Matthew Street, Matthews Drive side, if that needs to repair, then it needs to be part of this project. And otherwise, I'm in agreement with, everything else has been said so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Remke. Mr. Malewski.
Yes, I guess since Mr. Gentman brought up the signage in the front, now it's kind of making me remember. I thought that the, the comments from last meeting were along this lines. If we could look at the perfect picture, thanks, you knew where I was going, Chris. It looks like, you know, on the existing building, that the signage is at the, at the bottom portion of the roof. And, and I know the applicant felt strongly about elevating the, the new tenant's signage to be above it. And I think that if you look at the pictures there in the center row of existing, that accomplishes a couple of things here because I think that's what makes it read like it's not a flat roof by pulling that signage down below. So instead of just raising that canopy up a foot, you know, perhaps we, you know, like it's shown there, raise it up two feet or 30 inches or something to that effect. And then we have the signage be down below. And then this way, the canopy will, will die into the, I'm lost for words with the, with the vertical plane there, will, will be extended up so far, if that, if that makes any sense. And just a general comment to the, to the applicant here, again, I'm not a retail center developer, but I think any struggles that this center is experiencing has more to do with the center just being tired and the amount of deferred maintenance and not necessarily having much to do with the amount of trees that may or may not be, you know, hindering visibility. I think once this site has been improved and word gets out to the islanders and people coming here that this is a, a new, fresh site, I think that would, would attract so much, you know, potential clients and visitors, you know, regardless of whether the trees are removed or not. In fact, I think removing the trees would, would be a hindrance because that's what, like everyone's saying, it's Hilton Head. And, and that's what kind of makes it cool, you know. There's not big flashing pink lights and driving down the road. And I think this would be a very good destination once these improvements are made. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. And before I move back to Mr. Gentman, just back to, you know, I was suggesting the possibility of raising the height of the canopy at the shops. Of course, that has, would have the effect of shortening the parapet. And I guess now where we see the tenants, if we, yeah, that's, that's great, Chris. Or we see the tenants that are over the Machiha, you know, the new Chihaw set within like the EPIS. And of course, as the roof goes up, that band gets even narrower. And I don't know if it gets too narrow for a tenant sign. But I could see potentially, you know, this is a bit of a change, of, of that shorter parapet being all EPIS and maybe the one that bumps up two more feet, maybe that's entirely the Chihaw. So you've got, you know, contrast between these different parapets and it's not just a step and, and it gives you still plenty of room for a sign to lay on it and not look like it's being crowded by this band that's going around it. That's if everybody, along the lines of increasing the, the height of the canopy. I think if we were to, to go back to the thought of suggesting the canopy push up, say 30 inches, whatever, and the signage go back below the roof, I do recall, yes, the applicant previously being very much against that because of the concerns about visibility of the signage and wanting it to be more visible than it currently is on that band below. I think it could be difficult to do a motion to approve making that change. Just, I mean, it's, it's more of a dramatic change from what we're dealing here. We begin to get into things being much different from what we're seeing. Now move on to Mr. Gentman for round two.
Okay. I mean, I'm going to make this a little bigger point.
Okay. I mean, I'm going to make this a little bigger point. The difference between this submittal and the one we looked at before is really all about trees. The applicant literally did zero with the building from the very long discussion we had back in February, whenever it was, other than make the sidewalk wider. I mean, I very specifically remember us even talking about, you know, there's a, there's a picture in here, a drawing in here that shows how high the canopies are on all these trees. And the signs, the new signage would actually be up in the canopy of the trees when it's up on the bulkhead. It just, it, it, in fact, we even went to the point where we said, if you just took the existing shopping center and just replicated the colonnade as it is and put a new roof on it and stuck out it, I thought it would be a slam dunk. In fact, you can go back and listen to the tapes, I'm sure that's the exact word I used. I know Ms. Fox was on board with that. She sits next to me. You know. It's, we make comments and they don't get addressed. And I'll go further with it by, we've seen nothing on the cinema, we requested it. We've seen, we've talked about the backside and the sides that you don't see. We didn't get that. We wanted more detail on the canopy. We didn't get that. We got, you know, I'm happy to let the applicant respond, but in my mind, we didn't get anything we asked for, other than they made the canopy continuous and turned the corners with it and made it wider. And I'd like to know what else they did out of the, out of the hour conversation that we had. And I, I just, I can't have something keep coming back the same way. And then on the third time we say, oh, well, okay, now it's fine. I, you know, maybe it's just me, but this looks like a strip center on Bluffton Parkway. And it doesn't right now. For all its warts, Northridge is much nicer than what the drawings are showing, you know, other than it needs needed more upkeep. And we're putting a metal roof on it. So I would have a hard time with all these conditions to make a legitimate approval of conditions here. Because we made that last time and we didn't get what we asked for. So that's my second round. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gentlemen. And I think your points are well made. Certainly the changes were made and that the canopy was widened from six to eight feet consistently. And it does wrap the entire building as, and so we don't see blank end walls like we did before.
And I, and I gave him credit for that.
Yeah, you did. You did. I'm just, I'm just repeating the things that I see that were changed. But I, I agree that the, you know, the wall sections we see that are cut through the canopy, like you pointed out, it, you know, it just says wrapped, field column wrapped, you know, wrapped with what, wrapped with how. There's, you know, it's just a box drawn around it. We're not seeing. Typically when I see a wall section, I'm actually used to seeing, so that's, is it the machiha material? Is it wood? What is it? It's, you know, just simply saying it's wrapped is pretty, not telling me much. Like you pointed out, the, the frequency of these, the beams that are the tieback to the building, how often are those? The lighting, you know, I pointed out before, the lighting frequency, you know, is it every, is it like a continuous strip that runs along the entire bottom of this? Or is it, is it every 10, 20 feet? Whatever. I don't know. It's just information that is missing. The, the fact that we didn't see anything about how the end of the, the theater will be finished where the existing building will be removed. And that was clearly made a condition of, I do remember that on the, when we approved this conceptually previously, that that had to be finished and simply saying it's going to be finished is, we need to know how it's going to be finished. I need this to be some detailed information telling us that. So I, I, so it's, you know, certainly made, it's improved from what we saw before. I agree. And, you know, we're definitely making progress, but it is frustrating that, yes, which we should have seen more of the things we specifically asked for, like details. And I, I'm getting a sense from Mr. Gentlemen, or certainly you made the point that there's, that to make a motion to approve will have a lot of conditions. And not sure, it would be a lot of conditions, I'm assuming, that we're going to require staff and one or two DRB members to approve. I'm just concerned if it is too many conditions that's going to be placed on this to try to make this pass. Is that realistic? And is this, it's looking to me like it probably needs, I hate to say it, I don't want to, you know, I want to help move this along, but it looks like we need more of this detail that we asked for previously to actually review, to be more confident about what we're approving. My suggestion, yes, Mr. Gentlemen.
Sorry, finish your thought, but I'd like to join you in this conversation again.
Well, no, I was, I'm just, I'm questioning, I guess, if, if, I'm, I'm not certain if, if a motion can be made that doesn't have a long list of conditions. And previously, I think we've said, you know, that this should be probably generally five or less or, not a lot. I'm seeing at least 10. I'm just wondering if, if it might be better if this be pulled back and more of the detail provided that we'd asked for previously and be reviewed at another meeting. Go ahead and add, Mr. Gentlemen?
Yeah, I mean, this is deja vu. This is exactly the way the last meeting went. It was exactly the way the last meeting went. If we don't get what we ask for, I'm not going to approve it and I won't make a motion to approve it. Someone else can, but I'm going to vote against it if somebody makes a motion. Because we didn't get it. We didn't get the more details, didn't get the cinema. We don't know what's going on in Matthews Drive. We, you know, we, we also got them to change the sidewalk because before it was a patchwork quilt. So there were a few things that got picked up, but, you know, I look at the sheet that's up there and I've been staring at that same thing for the three times this has been here. And every time we've asked for more detail and we didn't get it. That's the only detail sheet we got in this entire project is that. And it's, it doesn't, it doesn't tell me everything. I mean, just the way the materials come together, there should be trim pieces around the top of that beam where the beadboard hits it. Beadboard comes in eight foot sheets. Are they going to put a batten at every eight foot? Are they just going to run the butts together? Where are those crossbeams? What are those crossbeams? How big are they? Just, I could talk about it all day, but we already talked about it all day twice. And I'm done talking about it. So I want to see more. But I'm, I'm not going to make a motion for approval unless, I'll listen to something if somebody else wants to do it, but I won't.
Thank you, Mr. Gentlemen and Ms. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Gentlemen. When I first opened up this package when it came to us, I went, what changed? What happened? And I, you're just braver than I am for bringing it all back to where it is. And I wouldn't approve it either today.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. So it sounds like considering the number of conditions that might have to be made to make this approvable or to, or to make a vote, it sounds like Ms. Fox and Mr. Gentlemen are both feeling very strongly against being able to make a vote in favor of it. I'm somewhat feeling the same way myself. So that puts potentially three. And then that leaves us with Mr. Molesky, Mr. McAllister and Ms. Remke. A vote of three to, in that I don't know how the three of you are leaning, you know, a vote of three to three. Again, my concern is that we just need more detail than what we've seen here. And I think to try to make a vote to approve would require so many conditions. And really, I hate to put it off on staff and one or two board members when really we'd need to see more detail for all board members to see.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is Chris, Chris Darnell. Do you mind me interrupting for a minute?
Please do.
So I would just, I would remind everybody that if it's a tie vote, the, it's denied. So in other words, if it's three to three, it's a denial of what goes before. And I would remind the applicant at this time, if he gets a denial, he's prevented on coming back to the DRB without substantially changing the project. And we can argue, staff and him can argue about what substantial changing will be. But I would just remind them of that. It, they do have, the applicant does have the ability to withdraw the project at this time if he want, if he wants and maintain his ability to come back sooner rather than, you know, that full year which is required by the, by the LMO.
Thank you, Chris. And yeah, I, I would just add to that that yes, it looks like it could be a vote of three to three or, or maybe even more. Again, so yes, it looks to me like it probably wouldn't pass. So my recommendation to the applicant would be to withdraw and to provide the additional detail being requested and come back. Because I don't, you know, I want to see this shopping center revitalized as I'm sure all of us do. And so it's not our goal to try to hold it back, but I think probably the best path forward would be to withdraw, provide the additional detail requested and resubmit. So do I? Yes, Mr. Gentlemen?
It's, it's more than just, to me, it's more than just providing more details. The big picture to me is lacking. And at that point I might get outvoted, but if, if, if this comes back looking like this and there just happens to be more details on the beams and things, I, my position won't change. It's, this is something that could have been addressed way back when it came into concepts because the comments were there. They chose to keep going at each step with these conditions with approvals, which as a basis, I can't stand conditions with approvals, especially if they don't, are extremely definitive and we're sitting there drawing it for them. This is showing that that's not working. So it needs to be more for me to support this when it comes back to.
Thank you for that added input. Ms. Fox, did you have something or not? Okay. So does the applicant have anything to Chris? Is that you, Chris?
Yes, that's me. Mr. Goldsmith or Mr. Osborne, are you still on the line? You might want to unmute yourselves. You're, you appear to still be on the line and you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
So we agree to withdraw. And we would love to be able to get this project done. It sounds like you do want substantial changes. And it sounds like we do not have a meeting of the minds, unfortunately. And I don't think that we tend to be based on what I'm hearing. Because I don't think I'll get approval on our end. We have investors that invest with us as well. And I'll, I'll just go through a few of the things and then we can see whether or not this is something that we should just fix what we have and move on and call it a day and focus elsewhere. But we understand that, you know, no, no offense either way, that sometimes people just disagree. And if that's the case, you know, we, it'll be what it is. And we would love to be able to work with you and see if we could find something, but we just disagree with a number of things. The most, you know, the, the trees in the main drive, the reason for that is actually to have visibility of the movie theater. You know, you need to be able to see the anchor. We were hoping that, you know, staff and, and the board would, would understand that theaters are going to have a whale of a time making it with the new social distancing. Based on the feedback that I'm getting from other, you know, movie theaters in our shopping centers. Gyms are also having that same issue, restaurants as well. So the, the formulas don't work. So we think that that box is going to have to be reinvented. And we're just trying to keep something where the line sight will be good for that, that one view. We still think it looks really like Hilton Head. We feel like this shopping center has more trees than other Hilton Head shopping centers by a long shot. And I've been before the board many times already, pointed out the ones even right across the street, down the block, the Whole Foods. We just feel we have, we're being treated differently and unfairly. But if that's one of your conditions of approval, I'll come back and I'll certainly make that. Hopefully we'll be able to work it out. The parapet wall height, I thought we had an agreement left. So I guess I left that meeting with a complete lack of understanding as to what we agreed to with condition. I made, I, I made our point that the signage has to be above the, the canopy, standing seam, metal roof. Because when you're in the parking lot, you want to have better visibility to the signage. So the tenants, so you can see the tenant sign. The raising that sign by two feet effectively makes it where I can't utilize that. And the signage that I showed on sheet MA 101 actually is to code. So that is the allowable size. And what's there now is less than what's code. We, we think that we can work out the concerns that I heard Ms. Fox raise, like for example about the machiha, that it looks like it sticks out. But it's actually embedded.
Mr. Chairman, that was a three minute, a three minute time alarm.
Yeah, thank you, Teresa. Yeah. And for the applicant, I appreciate the input that, you know, I, yes, I guess there, there are disagreements, but as the board, we are, you know, tasked to, to, review further design guidelines that we are given. And that's the way this board is viewing this. And I don't, as far as the trees, I, what was being suggested was not to block the theater, it's adding a tree or two between the entry drive and Home Goods. So that's not a, that's not asking for just totally blocking the center. It's asking to fill in the blank. With that, since the project has been withdrawn, we will move on to our next project.
Mr. Chairman, just, just for clarity and record, the, the application has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, would it be possible, we had originally or earlier talked about taking a quick break. We take like a five minute break?
That would be good.
Thank you. We'll come back in five.
Thank you.
We'll come back in five minutes. Mr. Chairman, I believe that's been about five minutes and we have all the DRB members back, I believe.
Okay, thank you. So we're ready to begin again?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then let's move on to our next project, Homme de Bay Lodges. Staff will do your presentation for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, this is.
Recuse myself again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Whitmer. Please make note, Mr. Whitmer is recusing himself in this one.
Okay, just to remind everybody, this is new development. Okay, just to remind everybody, this is new development conceptual for the final two projects on today's agenda. Um, Palmetto Bay Lodges, which is DRB 000901-2020. The applicant is proposing the development of workforce hous, workforce housing on three tracts of land totaling 2.7 acres. The project consists of a 16 dwelling unit, two-story multifamily building, a clubhouse building with grill area and activity lawn, associated parking, sidewalks and drives. The placement of the building and activity lawn are primary, primarily um, in the existing clearing minimizing tree removal and use of the existing curb cut. The large lawn area is for activity, active use with the design concept being it is everyone's yard, filling out the back of the clubhouse and grill area. The applicant had requested a condensed conceptual and final review, given the pandemic and efforts to complete this project prior to next year's tourist season. Staff does not support this request and recommends conceptual denial. Um, the reason being, the applicant should reconsider the site plan and provide the DRB um, with a site analysis. Um, the site, you can, on your, on your screen, you can see the site is outlined in red. Um, and you can see the three parcels that are in discussion here. Um, Palmetto Bay Road is running diagonally across the middle of your screen. And at the bottom, you can see Seepine Circle. Uh, of, and Arrow Road runs along the back, uh, first right here on the left side of the screen. Um, and Publix is directly, the Public Shopping Center is directly across Palmetto Bay from the site. Uh, of interest is the Smokehouse, which you all reviewed a couple of months ago and it received final approval to be rebuilt up here on Palmetto Bay. Uh, please let me know if anybody does not know where we are. Seeing none and hearing none, I'm moving forward. So this is the site plan, the three parcels, one, two, three. Sorry, that was a survey, excuse me. Um, the area of disturbance is indicated in, on this one, so uh, there will be areas of two of the, the parcels that will be undisturbed. I'm sorry, this is a, a sort of a, an analysis of the area. You can see the existing vegetation coming into the site because these are the three parcels here, one, two, three. Uh, you can see it's fairly cleared with only the perimeter being treeed and a little bit of trees coming in here, a little bit vegetation coming into the site here. We're going to look at a couple of pictures. This is looking towards Palmetto Bay Road. You can see the tree back, or car back here. This is looking towards um, Archer Road. That's the bar back here. This is looking into the site from Archer Road. So this is the curb cut. And you can see these existing pines right here, that's that vegetation that's creeping into the site across the property line. Again, those trees that are coming into the site right here. This is the proposed site plan, so here's the building going in, I'm sorry, three parcels. There's one, two, and then three right here. So the building sits here, proposed parking, clubhouse, and that existing access onto, I'm sorry, it's Target, it's not Archer. Target Road. Storm drain plan. Utility plan. Proposed landscape plan. See the large lawn area here. Plant schedule. This is the entrance gate detail, uh, with the pedestrian gate detail and the fence that are out, let's go back. That fence is running right here with the entrance gate and right here. Elevations of the proposed building. Again, you can see the, uh, the apartment building right here with the clubhouse right here. Looking at the apartment complex, our building from the lawn. There's the clubhouse. Plan for the um, apartment building floor plan. This is the second floor plan. Clubhouse elevation roof um, and plan. Okay, again, um, staff is not recommending conceptual approval and um, suggests that the applicant reconsider the site plan and provide DRB with a site analysis. An understanding of how um, that analysis should understand, should talk about circulation on um, the site. Uh, there was, if you will note, or the DRB and the applicant will note that there was considerable um, comments on this. Um, it was, given the request to, for a final review, staff gave it a, a really good look. And a lot of the comments would have been uh, comments in the DPR process. Uh, but they were included in the DRB because of that request for a final. And bec, those comments may affect the aesthetics, which is what the DRB is reviewing. Um, so that's the reason for the extensive review. And that concludes site's presentation.
Thank you, Chris. And is the applicant present and do you have anything to add to staff's narrative and as a reminder to this stuff when you do speak and to limit your time to 10 minutes? Thank you.
Uh, still good morning. Uh, Judd Parsons with Whitmer Jones Kiefer, uh, the applicant on behalf of the property owner. Um, yes, the site is, uh, the goal is workforce housing. Um, within the Seepine Circle area, uh, there's limited short, uh, of this type of product, knowing that further down Palmetto Bay Road there are. And then the uh, the RV Resort off of uh, Arrow Road are really the only residential areas in this uh, location. Uh, knowing that the town is, is seeking opportunities for workforce housing or housing of this uh, product type, uh, that was the, the goal and the basis in looking at this. Uh, knowing that the site is off of Target Road, it's, it's kind of a limited length road and it is kind of a connector. Um, so the frontage is, is, is also a restriction when it comes to how the parcel is dealt, uh, dealing. Um, yeah, the site plan attempted to kind of address some of these items uh, as far as it being kind of an infill uh, parcel with a limited frontage. Uh, and so really with this, obviously with the shortcomings and some of the uh, items for staff and recognizing that um, you know, that, that they can't, you know, they can't support this uh, packet as uh, as kind of uh, presented, you know, we're looking for feedback, feedback from the DRB uh, so that we can bring a better uh, product uh, for y'all. Uh, we will withdraw this uh, so that, uh, to avoid the denial. But um, obviously with just looking at this package, uh, we would still welcome uh, DRB comment so that we can bring back a better product, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll start with um, this, their Molesky comments.
Um, is it okay, maybe if you start with somebody else and I could see what direction things are going in and maybe circle back to me if that's fair?
Sure, uh, I'll move on to Mr. Gethman.
Okay, um, I guess just looking at, I mean, um, overall, Judd, I think the architecture is fine. But what I'm reading in uh, uh, staff's notes is there's a question about, does it exceed the 45-foot height? Um, are you able to answer that? And you can make a list and answer all at once or whatever. And the flood zone, um, I'm assuming that reading staff's comments is that the architecture will change because the building's going to have to be raised. Um, but you know, if uh, I think overall, from a conceptual standpoint, if all of those things were met, I think you're in good shape. Um, from an archi, strictly an architectural standpoint. Um, where is everybody parking? That's my only real site question. Um, and that's for Judd. You know, I'll
Mr. Get, Mr. Gethman, if I could add to your, your comment about the, the flood elevation. Um, I think that the concern, it would be if the building is raised, then there's going to be additional steps and you're going to have to accommodate handicapped access. So there's going to be a ramp system required. Um, so that will obviously affect the uh, aesthetics of the site. So staff would be concerned about how that fits in and how that all works into the site.
Judd, excuse me, can you hear me? This is Gray Stelt, architect.
Yes, I can.
Sorry, man. I'm sorry to interrupt, but um, I was supposed to be able to speak after Judd regarding the buildings. And um, I wanted to clarify the accessibility point that he just mentioned.
Uh, yeah, my apologies, sorry, I didn't realize that uh, that you were wanting to speak afterwards. And I, I missed uh, your stating your name at the beginning, I think there was some so if you would, just that for the record, so Teresa gets it.
Oh, no problem. My name is Gray Stelt and I'm the architect for the project with Housing Studio in Charlotte. Um, I may be mistaken, but I thought that I was, was supposed to speak after Judd. Um, just to brief you a little bit more on uh, the architecture. The building will not have an accessible ramp. Uh, it will be elevated five feet above the existing grade, so the finished floor is out of the flood plain or the flood zone. Uh, however, um, as per the South Carolina IBC in chapter 11, um, this building would not be required to have uh, an accessible unit uh, on the ground floor. So it will just have steps up to the breezeway and that will um, mean that it would look exactly like what we have presented to you today. Uh, i, if the building moves on the site away from the wetlands or in, in some other location, it would still look the same. Uh, the second comment I just wanted to touch on that was just mentioned was the building height and it is 41 feet tall, uh, from the grade to the peak of the roof. So it is within the 45-foot limit. Um, there may be some other things that come up with the architecture and I'll be happy to speak to those as we move along. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, back to you, Mr. Gethman, if you had further comments you had.
Are uh, are you able to build up the site five feet? Because there's a, there's a limit on how much you can change existing grade, if I'm not mistaken.
I think the understanding is that we would not raise the grade of the site, we're just going to elevate the buildings.
Elevate the building, okay, so they're just going to sit on a five-foot pedestal.
Uh, it's basically a, correct, a pier system uh, that supports the wood frame of the structure. So, uh, and then you'll see that in the elevation drawings where it's not a slab on grade, but the building actually has some, some height, uh, which I think actually gives it a much better look and more appropriate to the environment and the little country than if it was just slab on grade.
Yeah, so just to go back to what I was saying, i, if this building were three feet taller than what I'm looking at and it met the height guidelines, um, and you got the nice details in it, like it looks like it has, then I think you're on the right path architecturally. Um, of course, for final, we need to see details, lots of details.
Right.
And then my question still remains, where's everybody going to park?
Okay, we'll hand that back off to Judd.
Okay.
Yeah, no, Michael, um, the, the intent was, we were going to ask for a reduction at the DPR. Um, seeing as this being workforce housing, uh, there was going to be a system for the workers to get uh, in, in, in its kind of proximity to businesses. Um, we're going to seek a reduction uh, based on that. It's considering that with, with a lot of the workforce housing or um, the intent is that a lot of folks would be walking or biking or utilizing uh, public transit or even a company shuttle to work.
Okay, alright. So I mean, that's not really in my purview, that'll all be per the LMO and stuff. Just want to make sure we don't end up with a giant, you know, they get, you got that lawn in the front and if that were to get filled up with parking, it would be a totally different, you know, uh, product, I think, you know, because I, I think uh, so I think you're on the right track as far as I'm concerned. Um, I find it somewhat ironic, and not in a good way, that you have handicap spots, but a handicapped person can't get into the building. Uh, or, excuse me, accessible spots, but they can't get into the building. So that's uh, uh, it's just out there, it really has nothing to do with the design other than if you were to have to add a, a ramp. Um, but overall, from a conceptual standpoint, I think it's architecturally on the right track. And I'll let everybody else go.
Um, uh, this is Chris Darnell again with staff. And I, I think Mr. Gethman brings up a very good point that I want to make sure everybody on the board understands. If they request a variance in the DPR process for parking, they will still have to provide or identify space where that parking would go should something change. Um, and I am not, don't want to put words into Judd's mouth and he can certainly address this uh, his own, but I would assume that the lawn would be identified as the space where the parking would take place if something were to change. Um, and I'll let Judd answer that. And if I could make one more, um, pose one more question to Judd. It seems like the, the circulation pattern with the one-way uh, drive aisle is a little um, I don't know how to, a little generous for what it is, for what we have, just the one apartment building. Um, and if you could address that, seems like there would, and I guess to my point, it seems like there would be a whole lot less payment if there was, if it was a two-way drive aisle, which would only be required to be 20-foot wide, where now you have two 14-foot wide drive aisles.
Uh, to the, to the point of the, the showing the additional parking or the, the by, by code uh, parking, uh, we'll, we'll show that on the revised plan. Um, you know, the intent of the green space was uh, you know, a community space for the, for the residents. Um, and yeah, I mean, the, I think the, some of the buffers and some of the, you know, exterior constraints kind of, we wanted to have that clubhouse building, have a presence and have a component that made sense uh, versus just having, you know, straight-in T-drive. Uh, and then, you know, of course, kind of gaining access down to where we had anticipated the um, the dumpster enclosure also and kind of providing that as an opportunity to get away from the building. Um, but we'll, we'll, we'll look at those drive aisles But we'll, we'll, we'll look at those drive aisles and, and kind of that circulation in the revised plan. We, we understand the, the thought with the, with the two margins.
Could I jump in on that too? This is Gray.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. So I was involved with Brian and the firm on the conceptual design of the site plan as well. And one of the things we were trying to do is create a sense of place for this project, so that the people who live there had more than just their apartment or their bedroom or the clubhouse, but they actually had a, a more special or memorable place to, to live that it wasn't just like an apartment building next to a parking lot. So the idea was to create this formal, and it is very formal, I guess, compared to the more organic nature of Hilton Head Island. But to give them a green space and a sense of place and arrival that when they were home and with your wonderful climate, they would be able to actually be outside more than just in their apartment or not right on a parking lot. So we also thought that putting the parking in the back tucked away would minimize the impact of, of the building being next to an asphalt parking lot. And then the other comment, just briefly, as Judd mentioned, we're gonna have to change it a little because of the wetland buffers. But we did provide a lift for the clubhouse that's tucked away in the front left corner. And that would actually allow someone in a wheelchair or needs accessible entrance to get into the clubhouse. So the parking spaces somewhat could be justified if there is a guest or an event at the club. And that way, there would be accessibility to the common areas of the clubhouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on to Ms. Foss, normally I save my comments till the end, but go back to the site plan, Chris. Yeah, I, I think when it comes through for the, you know, the next, like, like Chris was pointing out of needing to show if, if this variance for parking isn't allowed, certainly to show where the, what would normally be required, where that parking would go, because that could definitely very much impact the board's thoughts on, you know, on, on, on the project overall. And then I think staff in the, in the written narrative had to comment about, in addition to this, you know, the one-way drive doing the loop and then basically the one drive is separating the tenants from the drop, from the, from the grass area. And to me, I agree, I agree. It's just, it's a lot of pavement for how many units there are here, when it seems like it, you know, it'd be, you could do the, the, the drive on the planned south side here and make it a double drive and then they'd have a very nice large lawn and, and would have more opportunity for trees and landscaping, especially considering that this, the site doesn't have much on it anyway, as being proposed to everything come off. Almost what's, what, what little is left. With that, I'll move on to Ms. Foss.
What a great gift you've been given by staff with all the comments and your ability then to look into everything before you bring it in for even conceptual approval. I like the comments that were made about you're minimizing the tree removal in the front and the two sides. That's appreciated, especially after some discussions we've had earlier. The location, I think, is great. I like that you're gonna be doing some workhouse housing. Parking for the bicycles will be something we'll probably wanna look at in, when I've seen another workforce housing, they have a lot of bicycle racks and a lot of bicycles that you see. So we'll probably wanna see exactly how you're planning to park the bikes. I agree with the pavement idea. I love the fact that you, you're providing lawn space and outdoor greenery and it is kind of a shame that you have to walk across that pavement to get to the space and be encircled in that lawn and not giving you more of a free-form feeling there. The comment, we don't usually talk about colors at this point, but it does appear like you've got a, a black and white color scheme going on. We don't approve whites or blacks and we don't like that much contrast. So I would ask that you think about that. And that's it for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foss. Moving on to Mr. McAllister.
Quick question for staff. One of the comments was regarding the fire department access road sort of the 20-feet wide. And obviously, we have a one-way 14-foot wide drive. Can you clarify on that? Are you saying that the drive would need to be 20-feet wide to be fire truck accessible?
That's a very good point, Mr. McAllister. You're correct. They're going to, they do like to see a 20-foot wide path for them to set up. Now, the drive aisle doesn't have to be that, as long as they have a place that's 20-foot wide so that they could set in a fire truck. Again, that would be something that would be approved during the DPR process when the fire department looks at the plan.
Okay. That, uh, that kind of had an impact on my first comment, which was gonna be to speak to the event lawn. Personally, I like the loop. I mean, I don't think there's enough, there's gonna be enough traffic here to be concerned about people crossing the crosswalk to get to the clubhouse. I think it defines the space and it ties into the clubhouse and the grill area, which should probably be heavily used. I, I personally like the loop and the one-way. But it sounds like you may have to reconsider it if you have to do a 20-foot drive. And to the point about the excessive pavement, yeah, there's a lot of pavement, but it looks like they're using pervious concrete, which is a good thing. So I think that reduces the environmental impact of it. I think Ms. Foss made a good point about the colors. They may just wanna be reconsidered. I know this is a conceptual submittal, but they do kind of read a little black and white. Would like to see a dumpster detail enclosure whenever you come back for final. And I also think it would be a good idea, just in case you guys don't get your parking waiver to dash in or show, suggest how parking may be met if, if you don't receive your waiver approval. And I think that's all I've got for my first round.
Thank you. Ms. Remke.
Excuse me, I do have one little architectural comment on your unit A2s. I, I was looking at the firewall, which made me notice that your bathrooms are going into each other instead of having doors into the bedrooms. So if you haven't corrected that, you probably want to. The other question, and I, I don't have this drawing in front of me for the gate, is that a decorative gate or is that an electronic gate with security? So is, is that, is that a, a gate that would have some kind of keypad or something? So just residents can, can go in and out?
Yes, that would be a controlled access and that, the, the median at the, right before the gates would, would contain that access.
Okay, okay. And I, I don't think this would be an issue, but I'll just make this comment that we don't wanna see any traffic backed up waiting to get into that gate, backed up on, on Target Road. So I, I'm just hoping that there's enough space for a couple of cars to get into the gate same time. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Remke. Mr. Molesky.
Yeah, a good point Ms. Foss made with the, with the bikes. That was one of my comments was going to be just to kind of show where bike storage would be. Are there any plans for any other amenities such as a pool or anything like that in that green area or just the, the grill in the clubhouse?
Just, just the, the amenities shown, the clubhouse and that open lawn area. It was understood that there's a lot of, as far as the, with the workforce and, and the population, that keeping that free-form space and that space for ball sports and kind of just being able to be outside was more of a priority than, than having that, that pool.
And will that just kind of be an open lawn area or is that meant to be, have a lot of overstory trees to create shade opportunities and picnic tables and that kind of stuff? Or is it a, a big open area?
It'll, it'll be an open lawn. Obviously, we've got, you know, buffering along the outer edge and then across the front of the building that will have some opportunities, you know, when it comes for, for planting. I think, I don't know if you have to bring the planting plan up, but no, the intent is that that interior lawn is, or that interior space is lawn.
Okay, and then that wetland buffer that I see, so that's actually the detention basin or whatever for the, for the site then?
Yeah, there's the, the ditch on the, on the upper side of the property and then that to the lower along era, I mean, is on Target. That's also their property. So that's some more detention along there.
Okay, so then that'll have an opportunity to kind of be landscaped or have a, a walking trail. Not that I'm trying to spend your money, but that's all kind of part of the site improvements as well then?
Yeah, I mean, the good thing is with, with this area of Target Road, there is a town path that we're connecting to. And having Captain Woody's across the way, it kind of provides something on the opposite side of the road for, as far as interest and there is, I see on the plans, there is, you know, the proposed turn lane. But yeah, I mean, it'll tie to the town's apartment pathways.
And I see Sea Pines written on these drawings here then. So is this specifically for Sea Pines Resort Employees Housing then?
That was an error on Housing Studio's part, that Sea Pines is not our client. So we had been working with someone from Sea Pines, but it's a different company that's actually developing this and will have that logo removed.
Okay. So it's not necessarily a, a generic apartment complex where anyone could stay. It's gonna be specifically for one, one restaurant owner or one group or whatever. And that's just kind of the reason I asked, that ties into the the potential approval to remove the parking spaces and have a shuttle access then, I guess, is why that's kind of important to you guys to have that one-way circulation, I guess, for shuttles and/or trolleys?
Well, it does, it does ease, ease the ability for the van to come and pick up in the morning and bring people home. At the end of the day, we, we were told by our client that these folks would be working in the tourism industry. And instead of having to get on a van and ride an hour inland to, to find a place to live or to shuttle them back and forth every day, they would actually be able to live on the island and enjoy the benefits of that. So to, to answer your question, the, the anticipation is that they all would not own cars. And therefore, that was the thought on the parking reduction.
And I guess my last question or comment would be, with, with that security gate there at, at the road, is there any other type of security, pseudo security fencing or whatever that would go around the property line in any way, shape or form?
At this time, the, the buffering and the plant material and considering we've got, you know, the ditches on the one side and the wetlands on the other, those, those are satisfying kind of the, you know, securing of the site.
That looks good though. It's a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to me, I'm, I'm still concerned about, you know, the, the loop drive. It just, for the number of units, whether it's pervious or not is irrelevant to me. It's the fact that there's less green space. That, that what few trees there are on the site are almost all being removed. So, you know, it's really gonna be a clear-cut site. Any new plantings are gonna be new and younger and smaller. So that's a concern. But really, I, I'm very against the loop drive. I just, it seems for what few units are in this building, it, it, it looks like it's set up for, and maybe it's to some future, but, but, but like there's supposed to be another building at the left side, another one at the bottom side. You know, if you have, you're creating like a, you know, a central space for them as it is, it, it makes no sense to me. So, you know, and if you could do us, you know, especially if you're gonna have a, need a wider drive for a fire truck, I, I'd be all for just doing a single drive in and out and give yourself more green space and plant more trees. I think this, you know, for the fact that this site has going to have next to no trees on it, it needs some overstory trees added. I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, so adding to that, I guess, the, the, the inside, the, the proximity of it to the building. Again, I'm always looking for, you know, landscaping or the buffering between the paving and the building. Admittedly, this is only a two-story building, but it's a raised two-story building. And, you know, that's, that's a very narrow landscape area. Basically, I think there's some palm trees currently shown in there. And again, in my opinion, it, you know, some room for larger overstory trees would be very helpful. And then at the top of the building, you know, that area, it's a narrow buffer as it is, I believe. And then, of course, the detention areas in there. And I guess what's shown there is probably meeting, I guess, the LMO buffer, one of the buffer option requirements. But I mean, this goes back to you know, discussions we've had with town council as far as, you know, cases where, you know, we're seeing buildings not well enough buffered, though they're meeting the LMO requirements. And so suddenly, what trees that are on that side of the property are taken out and there's this narrow band of trees and that shopping center that's right to the north is not an attractive thing for these residents to look at. I, I, it just seems to me like if you took out the loop drive and did a single drive, it gives you more room to add more buffering or landscaping and still create a lawn. Or as, and of course, I realize, well, I guess we were being asked to look at it as final initially where staff was, but you know, so I didn't see a transformer or any utilities like that. Or I think maybe there was a transformer shown, but there's also landscaping shown in the same spot at the upper right corner of the building. And then I think like the floor plan shows the HVAC compressors. There's some at the, at the right side of the building running on the street. But then again, they don't show on the building elevation. So, you know, those need to be screened, especially there on the facing the street, but they really should be screened all around. But it's, you know, so they show on plan, but they don't show an elevation anywhere. And that really needs to show. And if you go back to the front, to the elevations, Chris, on that front elevation, I mean, generally it looks good, but I, you know, would, it would, it might help it more, I think, you know, where that little small gable is that comes out, if that, to bump out, like I realize those are toilets inside, but if just that wall could come out a couple of feet, it gives you a little bit more breaking up of that elevation and makes more sense for this gable element to be there. The, the clubhouse building there on the left, I think it generally, you know, it's, it looks good as it is. I think staff had a comment about the lift, you know, I think what comes through for next rounds, having more information on that, that's going to look like is those can on their own. If they're, if it's just sitting next to the building, it can be unattractive potentially. Do the gate and fence details, Chris? I think, you know, the, the the, the top, the, the fence that extends out from either side of the gate, it looks, looks kind of like a hog fence to me. It just, you know, it's wire mesh and unfinished wood. I just, and it doesn't match the gate. I mean, it, these do look like they belong on two wholly different properties. And then the gate itself, I think, is found to be eight feet, nine inches tall. And the hog fence is like six. When you look at, and it is shown with it there, it's like the, the, the gate is proportionally so odd. It just proportionally doesn't fit, in my opinion. I think the gate needs to change entirely to not be so massive. It looks that, or you have to have a large, a higher fence, but I realize you're at the limit on the fence. And I don't know if gates for the LMO are required to, you know, when they're part of the fence, if they're limited to the height allowed by four fence. Something else to look at there. Part of the building itself, though, I think generally it looks good overall. The color scheme, I, I agree with you said before, definitely is, it's black and white and that's just- scheme, I, as Chris said before, definitely is, it's black and white and that just, just not open to our own character. And then another thing, I guess, for the future submittals would be, like, the windows, what are, what are the materials and colors of those that's sometimes not included on things we've seen before? That pretty well covers it for me for my first round. So, I'll start over again with Mr. Gentman for a second.
Did you go back to John? Did John get his first one?
Yeah.
You did, didn't you?
Yes.
All right. Now, just to, I've been taking very loose notes, but Judd had mentioned that they were going to pull this, right? So I won't be making a formal, was that correct, Judd?
Correct. We're gonna, yeah, considering staff's, yeah, comments, we're gonna, we're gonna withdraw.
Okay. Just so you, so everything we're telling you is just to give everyone a general idea on what to do the next time. So, just quickly, you know, addressing the, I know you guys are trying to fast-track it, so personally, doing a concept slash final is okay with me, provided that you understand that you got to bring in all the information for final. It's all the details, color boards, lighting, everything, and that you run a risk of it getting not approved. So, it's a lot of upfront work to maybe make you go back one or two steps, but that is up, in my mind, that's up to the client and the professionals, you know, the landscape architect, the, and the architect, that that's part of the risk you take to, to try to double up a, a submittal, okay? So, whether you come back for concepts or final, in my mind, is up to you all, but just be prepared, there's inherent risks, you know, that, and an excuse that says, well, it's all detailed out, can you approve it, is not an acceptable thing to come out of anybody's mouth at the next submittal. So, just to make sure that that's on the record, that everybody's been told that. Mr. Chairman Stricker, I believe, mentioned the HVAC. Keep in mind that in a flood zone, you have to raise the HVAC also, so those should be part of your elevations to, to double up on that point. And they should be, they need to be screened if they're going to be raised and not just by plants that are going to take five years to grow. We need to see some physical screening because these are going to be five feet above the ground, at least, at the base. Another thing, and I don't know where this is right now, but the flood maps are going to change. And they're going to change favorably in the aspect that things are going to be able to build, be built lower on Hilton Head. You might want to check with the flood plan administrator to see where those are. They were supposed to be here last, last August. And with everything going on, I wouldn't expect to see them anytime soon, but depending on your project schedule, you know, if they're coming out in July, which I think they're supposed to, you know, it could lower your building by three feet or even four feet in some areas of Hilton Head. I might just want to check on that. But, oh, no, I think everybody's giving you guys a good overview. There is a lot of, I didn't comment on the loop, I'm kind of indifferent to it. I think if it's nice pavers and they're pervious and things like that, it can be nicely worked into the landscape. I'm more focused on the lawn, which I think is nice, as long as there's something, something there to help define the edges, maybe that needs some plantings or something in there. But I'm, I, I think overall, it's a, it's a, it's a nice job. When you raise the building, the steps are going to take up more room than you have accommodated right now, so to take all that into account. Yeah, that's it for my second round.
Thank you, Mr. Gentman. And back to the point of combining conceptual and final, and Chris may be able to add more to this, but I think it's an LMO requirement that a new project has to come for conceptual and final separately. So I don't know that it's up to us as a board to say, yeah, we're fine with it, when it's, I think it's written into the LMO that it's required. All right, Chris, or, anyway, just something to look into. Moving on to Ms. Voss.
I have no further comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAllister.
Yeah, just going back to a point Mr. Stricker made about tree removals, trying to figure out where all your removals were taking place, because I only see like five or six right there in the vent lawn. And I realize we're removing quite a few trees in the buffer plan or, you know, page north of the building, in that top buffer of the sheet. Is there a reason for those removals? Is it grading related? Because I do know that, you know, you can't grade in the buffer, which was a comment, so I would just be looking to maybe save some of those, if at all possible. It just, to me, it looks like there might be an opportunity to save some of those trees. And again, going back to the loop thing, I think if you have to have a 20-foot wide drive aisle for fire truck access, then the loop's probably out. I don't know that it makes sense then, but I think you've gotten a lot of good feedback and that's all I have to add.
Thank you. Ms. Remke.
I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maleski.
Yeah, based on Mr. Stricker's comment before, I, I wouldn't want this to end up looking like a, a clear-cut site, so I would definitely be a proponent of making sure there's a lot of taller, taller trees added to the site. Maybe a suggestion as far as the, finding a balance between the 20-foot requirement for the fire truck and having maybe some type of, of turning circle for the, for the vans or whatnot, would be perhaps maybe if the, almost like a traffic circle that we see throughout the island, a smaller version of a traffic circle would be placed more towards the back of the site where the, where the parking is, then this way you could still have that 20-foot wide, you know, means of entrance and egress onto the site, expand the, the green area, and then just have that, that turnaround circle there towards the back to make it easy for, for the vans to, to come and go. That, those are my only comments. Thanks.
Thank you. And I don't have any further comments myself. So, takes us back to the applicant, if you want to have any other input you want to get from us or if you want to formally withdraw.
We'll just say that we will formally withdraw. We greatly appreciate staff and the board's comments and input, and knowing that this will be, you know, conceptual and then on to final, we'll go, they'll go through the full steps, but we certainly appreciate everybody's first blush at this and we'll take that into account.
This is Chris Darnell with the town. Judd, before you get off, I think Debbie had a really good point about the stacking in front of that gate. There is a, I, I would just remind you that there is a requirement for stacking of cars in front of the gate. I don't know what it is, but you might check that out.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on to our next project, Cordillo Tennis Courts Phase Two, which I need to recuse myself.
DRB, just to be clear, so Michael, you're in control now.
You're all in trouble.
DRB 000991-2020, Cordillo Courts. The town of Hilton Head Island recently resurfaced the tennis courts at Cordillo Courts Park. As part of Phase Two of this upgrade to the existing facilities there, is the construction of a restroom and shelter that includes storage to facilitate the organized activities at this park. Staff recommend, staff recommends conditional approval with the comments noted in the comment sheet and request that the comment sheet be added to the NOA at this time. Oh, sorry, I'll pull the plan. So, you can see the site, or should be able to see the site on your screen right now, outlined in red. I've kind of zoomed out because there's a lot going on in this area and I kind of, just kind of wanted to point that out real quick. Cordillo Court, is running, Cordillo Court, not, Cordillo, excuse me, Parkway is running sort of diagonally from right to the bottom left on your screen. Pope Avenue is running from the top to the bottom, I'm sorry, Cordillo is running from the top to the bottom left on your screen. Pope is running from the top to the bottom right on your screen. And in the bottom right, you can see Culligny Circle. The park that's under construction right now is in this location where my cursor is. Again, Heritage Plaza Hotel is here, that's just been completed. This is Circle Center with BiLO here. You have, I'm sorry, Coral Fans, Time Share right here. There's also Time Share across the street over here. And St. Luke's Church is right here, and there's multiple multifamily developments planned south of Cordillo Parkway. So that's your site right there. Now, I zoomed in a little closer on this so that you can understand where property line for this is. This is pre, pre-redevelopment of the courts, but those are the four tennis courts there. The, the building would be located in this area right here, and this is multifamily development, the hedges, and, I'm sorry, I can't remember the other one. But you can see it's completely surrounded by multifamily with this being Cordillo Parkway here. So just taking a look at some of, at the site, this is the redeveloped site, includes a perimeter fence that's screened, it's got a windscreen on it. And there are the four new courts. That is, the courts are sort of, I'm sorry, there the courts are right here, I turned around. The, the new courts and the new fence is right here, so the, the building would be located in this area. That's driving into the site off of Cordillo Parkway. See the new fence, new courts to the right. This is a plan locating the building. Again, the building is right here. Cordillo Parkway is off to the right of your screen. The new, the new tennis courts are here to the top and left of your screen. This is the proposed plan for the building. It's just a restroom with a storage area right here and a shelter area. And again, at this time, staff recommends conceptual approval with the comments noted in the comment sheet and request that the comment sheet be added to the NOA. This includes staff's presentation.
Hey, thanks, Chris. And as a reminder, David, I think you are the designated note taker and motioner, motion person on this particular project.
Okay.
If you, I guess this is kind of like the person that sits in the exit row in a plane, if you're not able to do the duty, you speak now, but otherwise you're in the seat. So, we will, I know Barry gets to talk next, so I'm going to mute and let, let the applicant speak. Barry, welcome, and then we'll go through individual comments. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm Barry Taylor with the FWA Group. I really don't have a lot to add from what Chris has presented, other than the, the main focus of the architecture here was to kind of assimilate what's happening with other components in the area and mainly to kind of mimic what's happening with the toilet and buildings in the park that's being developed further down on Pope Avenue. And that's my only comments. I'd be glad to take them.
Short and sweet. Thanks, Barry. Just hang on there, Barry, if anybody has any questions for Barry during your time speaking, please alert Barry that you're speaking directly to him, or if you have a question for Chris, same thing. So, first in line, we have Brian Whitmer.
I think this is a good project. I have no additional comments beyond the additional requirements that staff was asking for. So, and as a user of these courts, it'd be nice to have a restroom.
All right. Kathy Voss.
I am wondering, when I saw the picture of where this is going to go, are any of those trees going to be removed?
No, we're, the building has been cited so that does not affect any of the trees.
Okay. Awesome. That's all I have to add. Thank you.
David McAllister.
I think it looks good as well. Only question is, is there any consideration to putting sidewalk connections or anything, or is it just going to be mulched?
Well, there's a, from the parking, we're, the existing parking there is being removed so that we can put permeable parking in, and there's a sidewalk that connects the building to those parking spaces.
Oh, okay. Must have missed that. No further comment.
All right, and we got Debbie Remke.
No further comments. Thank you.
And next, John Maleski.
Yeah, I apologize, but no, no further comments for you. Thanks.
I also have none, so to, I know everybody's hungry, so if anyone wants to make a second round comment, you have about five seconds to speak up. Anyone? All right. I think that was five anyway. So, would anyone, being, David, would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion regarding Cordillo Tennis Courts Phase Two, DRB 000991-2020, to approve with the following conditions, that all staff comments be included in the motion.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. McAllister. And do we, do we have a second? I don't know who our designated second. Kathy, for all seconds. And the motion with conditions is that the staff comment sheet, staff comment sheet be added to the NOA. So, Ms. Teresa, would you like to take a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Voss?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Maleski?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
Yes. So, the vote passes unanimously, Barry. That is it for you. You can sign off unless you have anything else to add.
No, just a very much thank you.
You're welcome, and I'll turn it back over to our fearless chairman, Dale.
Thank you. I believe that covers us for today. We don't have any board or staff issues to review, so am I correct, Chris? Nothing further?
That's, nothing, nothing further. I would just remind you that there are no, there are currently no plans to do this on a regular basis. I would anticipate that there might be another one coming down the, the road. I have one application in for review, but again, I have one application in for review, but again, there are no scheduled DRB meetings at this, at this point, and we'll let you know when there are.
Okay, thank you. Now, as I understand it, I guess, town council continues to have their emergency meetings on our regular days, so it may be a day, when our next one is, may be a day different from usual. And you'll just advise this.
That's correct.
Okay?
That is correct.
All right, with that, meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.